City Council meeting, city council. Regarding these two specific issues, Thursday, May the twentieth, twelve p.m. or right after. So I want to, well, come everybody, any of our guests, but we don't want to keep anybody because. They do, then we have, have trouble getting a quorum for others, special meetings. So we'll go straight to it. Two issues, the first one is the law enforcement complex and has, has Mr. Valley joined yet?
No.
We're. We have, we might have some connectivity issues at city. I came over here to. So, so I wouldn't be part of that. Helen's on. Sandy, are you on over there?
Yes.
I'm gonna basically, I'm getting started in the interest of time. Yeah, maybe if Andre can come over to one of your offices, that would be helpful. Instead of trying to get on separately, I'll get it started. So the other night, there was a vote to accept the. There was a vote to accept the lease on the law enforcement complex. But it was not, it was three to two, and you need four to pass. In the interim, Mr. Valley has gotten the county to agree to limitation of. Or to add to the lease, there be no more than a five percent increase in rent. And future renewals of the lease agreement. That's the only thing that's changed other than. I can, I can commit that we will keep a presence on Plaza Street, which was something brought up the other night. I think we'll be able to do that. Also, the. Moving costs, we don't have, but we'll have. We'll have that soon and it won't be quite as much as I think people think. But at any rate, at this point, is there a motion for approval of? Lease agreement as stated. From the council.
This is ever Jane and I, I, I need some clarifications on some things regarding the. Inter local agreement on May the fourth in my packet, I received a copy of that agreement. And during that meeting, Attorney Valley said that he was working to change some of the language on the, at the next meeting. Which was May the, where is my packet? Was it May the eighteenth? A copy of the interlocal agreement was in that packet, but it was the very same agreement. There was no language change or anything. You just mentioned that the increase would be no more than five to ten percent. I, I, I really guess I would like to see. I would like to see that information in writing in the agreement. And any other, any other language changes that I was told that was going to be in there. Okay, that's one point. The second question.
Go ahead.
The second question. The second question, something you just mentioned that I want to ask about is the reason for keeping the Plaza Street. Open, because that's going to be two operational costs. If you'll just explain that to me.
Yes, but the first thing, have y'all established that as a form? Have you called the row?
No.
You're right. Thank you, Mr. Valley. You want to call the row, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Franklin.
Here.
Saint Columbia.
Present.
Etherly. Davis.
Here.
I have two absent, four present.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, ma'am, if I may. When I got it, I've been trying to talk to Ms. Amy Boar this morning while I was in court, I was able to talk to her. My concerns about it were, what, what two, one was the length, because this goes down to a year. As I formed the council the other night, but many, many of you were kicked off at the time as I went back to review it. The issue, the issue is this, they're doing a one-year contract and the, this is a negotiation that the mayor and I had with them. Now, the mayor concerned about the length of the contract. I asked for, for language that would include. A cap on the amount that they could possibly raise the rent, because the major concern would be. If you go there for a, a year, then they raise the rent next year, it could be exorbitant. And so what I proposed was a five percent cap on any increases, and that doesn't say that we agree to an increase. But in the event the rent is increasing, it can only be increased at, at five percent of the time, so that we all will have an understanding. Of what the potential rents would be and et cetera. I also raised concern with the mayor about citizens based on Mr. Franklin's conversations the other day. And Ms. Crockett both inquiring the mayor about the need to have walk-ins, et cetera. And as you all have voted and I went back and reviewed the minutes, you all have voted. And it authorized the mayor to, to afford to go ahead and enter the contract, subject to the final negotiations. And when I met with the mayor about it subsequent to the last meeting, what I asked and he and I were discussing was the possibility of having a. Substation out there west, so your people will still have access to police and et cetera if you had a substation. So that, that is the basis of the conversation that he and I had subsequent to the council meeting. And that what he's telling you as to what potentially are. We understand that there may be additional costs, Mrs. Today, you're talking about the agreement, but Mr. Crockett and Mr. Franklin both raised concerns about. Citizens having access to police on the west side. And so that was the genesis of those conversations, just to bring you full circle as to. What we had discussed.
Thank you so much for that information. I, I can accept those points. I'd also like to see access on the east side. For citizens. Okay, I'm trying to see if there's anything. I got the floor plan. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get it printed out. I might have a question regarding that. I yield back.
Also, as related to floor plan, Miss, Miss Ford, Miss, I think the thing about is. We hadn't physically gone to look, but it's, it's available for, in, for this council, if you want to go physically look at the floor plan, et cetera. That, that, that is still an option for you all. Also, just, just, so we have clarity. The police department, as my understanding from speaking to the mayor, is not going to move in June. The contract will begin in June. And we'll also be potentially looking at, I think you want to address with you all. I don't think you're looking at taking the old furniture, that I think you'll be looking at is some phone equipment, et cetera, but not the. The, the phone lines. And I don't know what the cost would be for the move, but that's one of the things to, to look at. I think you're looking at all new furniture in the new facility. But I would defer to the mayor and then you all, but I just wanted to, as my mind, we're thinking about the things that we discussed since we met the other night. I just wanted to bring you full circle to the conversation the mayor and I had.
Well, can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
I do believe that, and this is me just looking at it. Now, now, as we started adding costs, we don't know how much the move is going to cost. Okay, you're gonna move somebody, they won't do furniture, they do things. We, before, before, I, I can't say yes to none of this until we get a correct number. On how much all this going to cost. Okay, the contract don't start, the contract starts in June. Well, we, we, so we would have to pay for the long, the long as it take us to move out there, we still gotta pay utilities, we still gotta pay all these other things. And we're still paying another person. We're gonna stay in a house and we still gotta pay bills on, and we got a house, then we're gonna pay some rent. All this before, we have never, we, we haven't even moved. We go buy furniture for a new house that we paying rent on before we be moving. See, all, see, we need to, we, what I would like the council to think about is getting the whole cost of what this going to cost us. Because, yeah, I understand, it's, it's, it, it seems to be a good move. You, you need to be able to tell the public, okay. How does this sound that we're finna, we, we're gonna buy some new furniture, but we're still gonna stay in the old building? We're gonna pay rent, but we're still gonna be in the old building until we decide to move. How much is going to cost us to move? How long would it take us to move? Okay, then you get out there, what if you find out it's not enough space for all your officers? Have you look at the outside parking? So will we still use the old facility out here to park our cars there? Because I don't, as you go around the, the, the justice complex, how many parking spots they gonna give us? If they give us eleven slots. We have more than eleven officers. Okay, you got the police chief, the assistant chief, you got CID, you got all these, all these people that's gonna put out this building. We really need to, we really need to get a full cost of how much this going to cost the citizens. Because city council members, I, I, I tell you this, what we have to look at, when all this come back. It will be saying that the city council did this, and we have to look at our money to see, can we really afford it? Yes, they said some savings. Yes, it may be, but show us the numbers. It's good to move. I think it's a good thing to move, but before we all decide to move, I think. We should have an estimated cost on what is going to cost us to move, plus what it's going to cost for the furniture. How, how many months will it take us to move out there to fully move out there? How would it, how long would it take us to get our equipment up and running? Those things that we should be trying to figure out, and how would this impact our citizens? Because the citizens will be moving for Plaza Street, I mean, the department will move for Plaza Street, I'm here to the justice complex. So watch this, and this is my last thing. We finna move our police department out of a high crime area into a safe location. While we, while, while, while we do our citizens like that, move our police department from where the crime is over to an area where no crime is. Our police need to be present in the crime areas. That's why we have so much crime. The money we gonna spend moving out here, the money we can remodel our own building. Because we're, we're showing the citizens that right here, that we want to move our police department out of a high crime area to a safe location. Now, I give it back. So that's just my thing. I want the council to think about that. Why move our police department out of a high crime area to a safe location? While our citizens already having a hard time trying to get to our police officers. Right now, you call the police department, you can't get an answer. We need to keep our police department where we can see that what people, what they in the community, in the neighborhood.
Excuse me, excuse me, just a second. The purpose of this meeting, the, the, the discussion or debate about whether to move, as Mr. Valley said, has already been held. Most of those answers. Were addressed, or most of those questions were addressed already, and the vote by the council was to approve the move. And to give the two of us the authority to negotiate the lease. Both Mr. Valley and I have come back with an acceptable lease as far as we're concerned. And we're, we're entertaining questions about it, and a lot of them are good questions. But the council's actually already made this decision. It's the, it's the lease agreement that, that Mr. Valley and I. And the county has negotiated, and we're already basically spending a half million dollars a year. And lost revenue because of the change in the, in the court tax that's dedicated to the complex. So in a way, we're already spending a half million dollars a year. There are a lot of answers, a lot of good answers, a lot of issues there, but they were already addressed. So the question at this point. For example, on a telephone system, we need a new telephone system. If we move. We're not going to know exactly what the costs are until we know we're moving there. If we're not going to move, then we have to address the telephone system now. Every time we put this decision off, we're putting decision off about what we're going to do about our telephone system. Ultimately, the council's going to have to approve, approve what we do with the telephone system, but we can't make a decision until we know where we're going to be. The council approved it, subject to Mr. Valley and I agreeing with the county to the terms of a lease. The terms of the lease have been explained. Is there a motion to indicate support of what we've submitted? That's really the only purpose to this. The only purpose to this, ma'am, I'm not recognizing anybody except for a motion, because we have one other item on the agenda. And some people have indicated they can't stay long. So is there a motion to approve this lease as proposed by Mr. Valley?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion, I shall approve.
Mr. Saint Columbia makes a motion that we agree and approve of the lease, Mr. Valley and I. Agree to with the, the county as stated. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Say again.
Second is the motion. Okay, we've already discussed it, accepted questions, and because of the nature of the timing here and people's time, Ms. Ramsey, can you call the row?
Saint Columbia.
Yes.
Rocket. Forward.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We lost this forward.
Okay, Etherly. Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
We don't have a call because we lost this forward. So we don't have a call. We lost this forward.
Oh.
So I guess we got stuck in because we lost this forward.
Yeah, so you have Ms. Davis, you have Mr. Franklin, you have Mr. Saint Columbia, and you have me. That's a quorum. So can you continue with the roll call?
Well, you don't, you don't have me.
We have a quorum. Mr. Franklin, you're out of order. Ms. Ramsey finished, complete the roll call for the record.
Franklin. Smith.
Yes.
You have three yeses and four absent.
Okay, is there a motion to revoke what the council has already done? Which was to agree to move into the law enforcement complex and allow Mr. Valley and I to agree to the, to the lease agreement. Or to negotiate the lease agreement. Right now, you've, you've already approved that we will move in, and at Mr. Valley and I, as long as we agree to the lease, we can do so. This was not, this was not a subject for debate about whether to move in or not. If you want to revoke what you did earlier, you certainly have that right.
What, what kind of motion are you asking for now?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking for clarity. We, we second vote, and we haven't had a fourth vote in favor of it. But the way this still stands is, the, the council approved moving into the complex, subject to the negotiation of a lease. And they gave that authority to Mr. Valley and I. We both agreed to the lease terms. We're ready to go. This was a courtesy to go over this with the council, so it doesn't actually require a vote. However, if the council doesn't want to do it, they can always revoke what they did earlier.
Oh, okay.
So I'm merely, I'm merely trying to see if there's a, a majority that wants to revoke what was done earlier.
Mayor, I, I think that, that this, there's no, at this point, Mr. Franklin left, I think there's no quorum to take any action. You can discuss whatever, but.
Go ahead, I'm.
I just, you, Ms. Davis, and, and Mr. Saint Columbia, that, that remain aligned, that, that have any voting authority. I think that both.
In my view, then, the, the matter still stands that the council has approved moving. And you and I have agreed on the lease. So, I mean, and the lease begins with you first, and some of these answers can't be answered until we. Until we move forward and order a telephone system and, and do the other things. And most of that's going to come back for the council anyway, before we can spend the money, but we don't know what it is, and we can't do anything, and we. Got to complain about telephone calls, but we're, we can't fix the telephone system until we make a decision on this, so. If the council's not willing to revoke what they gave us the authority to do earlier, and you and I both agree on the subject, the terms of the lease with the five percent. Then, in my opinion, we should move forward and sign the lease. It's incumbent on the council to undo what they've already done, whether they have a quorum or not.
Right, well, out of abundance of caution, uh, well, I don't agree, agree with you in principle, uh, mayor, they, they did vote to do what you said they wanted to do. And I asked, uh, Ms. Ms. Ramsey can read that, or attach that to the minutes of this meeting, and such the previous minutes. She provided well with a copy of the minutes that they did vote to do so. Since we're not moving on January, on July, June the first. I don't know if it's necessary for you to go ahead and execute it immediately for clarity purposes. I think that, mayor, that you are correct, that they've already authorized you, that they've already authorized you as the holders of the real estate. To execute the agreement. They voted and they asked us simply to, to get better terms. But they authorized and voted in the minutes, and then Ms. Ramsey provided those minutes to the city council. For those who have emails, and I don't know if she provided, the one member who doesn't have email address or copy. But my whole thing is. I think that, that we should try to make sure we have a quorum with the council and discuss with them, so they have a clear understanding with everybody. Would at least have a quorum and understanding what it is that you're trying, what, what it is that you intend to do. Your intention, from what I hear you are, that you are going to act on the previous authority that they've already given you. And that you have negotiated this contract in good faith based on the, the, what they've already authorized you to do. They're in charge of the real, real property. They authorized you to move the facility. By, by a vote that's recorded, you have the record that you've been authorized to do so. Out of abundance of caution, you're, you're seeking to see whether they want to repeal that or not, or, or go forward. But until, until they, they take some further action, the record is clear that they've authorized you to do it.
Well, I, I, I'm just letting you know, I'm, I'm ready to sign it with that five percent that you negotiated, which I think is a good thing. And the reason I want to move forward, it's, it's incumbent on the council. If they want to repeal something they've done, they have to have a quorum and they have to do it. I can't do that for them. You can't do it for them. And by getting off the meeting, so we don't have a quorum, in order to avoid. Doing, making a decision essentially, that's, that doesn't give me, or you the right to avoid what authority we've already been given by the council. When it was in a quorum, when it was a majority vote. So in other words, they've indicated no desire to repeal that. And they're unable to get the votes to repeal that. They did vote in a quorum as legally authorized and approved in the minutes to give us the authority to move. They wanted to move, subject to our negotiation. You and I have agreed to it. The practical issues that I see, just, you already know, and I kind of said this. We don't know what the phone system is going to cost, because we don't know for sure we're moving. And we don't know when they can do it, and we won't get the phone system corrected until we have that information. So I would like to sign the lease, move forward, so that we can begin the process to see how much the furniture will cost. To see how much the phone system will cost, and get that order and get that, because that's got to come before the council anyway. And then we can talk about what it would look like to have that presence on Plaza or Cherry and both. We can talk about all that, has to come for the council anyway, so.
Well, I'm not trying to frustrate your purpose, as, as I stick by what I said earlier. Today was a noon time meeting, and I understand that you properly articulated that people got off the line once you start talking and your quorum was defeated. Because people got off the line. I agree with you, that, that has transpired. The, the issue that I was saying is, is maybe you can give it one more go before you do so, just so. It will be clear that you've offered them opportunity to, if they want to send it, there's public record saying it. There's still minutes being recorded, even though we don't have a quorum, because of two or more of council members and you are here. The media is present and et cetera, so this conversation is open, and they can review it at any point. But I would try to have another meeting, especially considering you got to have another anyway, because you have a pressing issue with the landfill that you need to have addressed.
But, I mean, I might clear that they don't want to address that issue, I'm not getting off phone calls, so. I mean, I can't, I can't require them to make decisions or be responsible. All I can do is do what I can do and you can do.
But I want to give you the same caveat, remind you of when you, when you were upset the other night. And you, you and I were having a conversation, and you were saying that the actions of, of a couple don't represent the whole council, so. But this, I'm regurgitating that back to you, so you can understand, give it one more time.
I, I agree with that, but that's kind of my, that's kind of my point, is you, we're letting the minority of the council drive the decisions by not acting. And it's the responsibility of the council to have a quorum and to make those decisions. They've already made a decision to move in. They've already made a decision to give this the authority of both degrees, so let's just sign it and move on. You don't want it. On them to demonstrate otherwise, and they haven't been able to do that, because the majority of them. Have not agreed to do that and can't hold a quorum to do that. And yet, they did have a quorum and did the rest of it legally, and that's all we have to go on. So to allow a couple of people to obstruct that process, to me, was an obstruction of the public. The public will and the public good, because we do have a quorum on record, approved minutes, agreeing to move in. Agreeing to give us the authority to sign the lease. We agree on the lease, so let's just move forward.
One legal. Right, one legal thing I want to correct, they gave us the authority, when I say us, the mayor's office and the city attorney's office to negotiate. Only the mayor's office had authority to sign a contract, and only the mayor's store has thought of to sign any contract. And so the practical issue, I think it follows your argument though, mayor, is that they're in charge of, of the real property and the finances. And according to the real property, they've authorized you to make the move, and they authorized you to enter to a contract. The issue that I'm just saying, and it's just, I've been down this road a whole bunch of times, and I would just say out of abundance of caution, you have to June the first to sign it. To sign it, uh, out of abundance of caution, try to make one more effort is what I'm just saying, and I know that's not a legal argument, but I'm just saying this. To establish the record that you're, you're, you're intently trying. At the same time, I would also advise that, that we need to make sure that we began to get the cost for the actual move. When I say the cost of the actual move, how much furniture you need and those things that you can ascertain. I understand the phone line, you've, you've told me that several times about the phone line, but the issue with the actual, okay, how much space we have, thirty, two hundred square feet? How much we're gonna spend on furniture and et cetera, because they have to approve that and et cetera, and that's something that. Not to cast this personal, the chief, that's something that hadn't been brought back to the city council since, since the initial approval. And those are things that they need to understand. I also still think, just as we've discussed off the, off, off of this conference line. That, that, the, the facility, there is some good things about the facility on nine eighty's Plaza remaining open for people to have access to. And to look at that as well, as to what we can do. But this is a financial issue, and I, I regret that we don't have a quorum, but I would advise, just, just, just so. I would advise that to simply try to make another effort to try to have a meeting in a quorum, so that we can try to address this, this issue for June the first.
Mr. Valley, I agree with everything you said, except for one thing. This was that meeting, and it is what it is. This was that meeting to try one more time. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, is it? I agree with Mr. Valley. I mean, this is a special call meeting. I don't know what people have to, to do during the day, although there were. A couple of people on that got off, and I'm about to get off because I'm going back to my meeting, but I, I. Is it possible, like Mr. Valley said, to at least give it one more try, at least one more regular meeting? To see if it goes up and down, or, or up or down, or, or how it goes. If there are some questions that need to be answered or explanation that has not already been addressed. Then is it possible to do that so we can move on to the next item, agenda, or whatever is next in this city? That's, we consider important. I consider it important, but not saying that everybody does, but. If it's possible, can we just at least give it one more try?
How about we, we do something in between? If, I'll, I'll wait off on this, if we can sign Mr. Ford with the information she's asked for. I don't know where Mr. Etherly stands on it, but if he has anything he'd like to see. And if I will indicate to me. That, that they have favor of it now, that's the information, then we'll move, we'll go ahead and move forward. But I'll at least give them the chance to get the information, to answer the questions, because most of them is for it, I believe. But we'll see if, if Mr. Etherly has anything.
The meeting is next, a week after next, so, I mean, June the first is right around the corner.
And we have all next week, going to a special call meeting Tuesday night or something like that, then. I don't want to continue to kick the can down the road. If we can resolve this issue, get it resolved, if we're not gonna solve it, we need to go with and, and go on from there. But I think. This is special call meeting, and that, that you did have a quorum. this is special call meeting, and that, that you did have a call. And I don't know why they left the meeting, whether they were kicked off, was, was the, was the, they intentionally left. But, uh, I think the thing is, if we just give it a yo mis try, just one, um, then, then you can make a decision, because it's one of those things, you have the authority already, but, but all things that you can do are not wise to do. And, uh, it may create a greater fight over something that, that is not unnecessary. But I think that the council, once they're shown the minutes and shown everything else, I think that they will go ahead and, and, and look at the agreement as, as a total. Now, I, I may be wishfully thinking, but I'm just saying that, that, uh, that, uh, just give it one more chance, and we just, just resolve it. I know you don't like to waste time on, I mean, the
Well, no, it's, it's just that no, no decision is a decision, and, and we actually didn't make the decision already, so. It, it's, it's what we're, in, in my opinion, and this was the meeting that was the second, you know, chance, and I, I don't know that that's gonna change, but I do agree with one thing. If, if this, uh, Ford can be satisfied and indicates that way, or she indicates she's not satisfied, I would definitely consider that too, as far as how we move forward. But to just not make a decision and continuing to ask questions and continuing to kick down the road, I'm not gonna do that anymore. We've done that for years now. And with, it's the same questions over and over, we've answered them before. And so i- if it's a genuine question and genuine request for information, and we satisfy that request, then that's fair. Uh, and this, uh, Ford dedicates her approval or not approval, either way, I don't think we have to wait till another meeting because that will determine it anyway, and I'll respect what she says. If she doesn't want to determine what to do, then we've already approved it. I feel like we have the responsibility to move forward, unless it's repealed. And it's incumbent, it's responsibility of the council, not the mayor, to repeal it, and to do that, they have to have a call. And, you know, that's not my responsibility, if they wanna repeal it, they need to, to repeal it. Right now, it's just in, in nowhere's land, except it's been approved on the record by a majority by a call. And we've done everything we said we would do, and really, this was mostly a courtesy, and we hope that we would get a sense to the council, uh, of unity going forward, really. Uh, that hasn't happened, so what I'll do is, is ask, and I'll ask Mr. Edley too, if there's anything he needs. But I'll ask Ms. Ford if we can get her that information, if that satisfies her, satisfies her, she's okay with it, and I think we ought to just sign it instead of waiting because it's, it's a moot point at that, at that level.
I, I understand.
But if, if she indicates that she's not happy with it and, and is against it, then I'll, you know, I'm less likely to do that. I'm sure, because the next, you know, but I will ask for him to repeal it at, at some point, because that's, that's where it is legally.
The one thing that I wanna say, I, I still wanna issue the general caveat to you about speaking with the, with the Ms. Ford, uh, do you have to notify the paper and et cetera, when you speak?
I'm not gonna speak with him, I'm just gonna send him the information, and I'll, I'll email Mr. Etherly and ask him if he has any other questions or anything he wants us to do.
They'll need to copy the paper.
Copy, that's fine.
Hey guys, before we get off this meeting right here, I, I, I would like to, uh, ask that we try to schedule, and this is, and this is just a, a, a request or an attempt to try to schedule a special call meeting for six o'clock tonight, if they don't wanna do it, they don't have to. But I, I still wanna ask about this, uh, the purchase of this dump truck for the landfill. If they don't wanna do it, you know, we're gonna lose this particular, uh, truck. Uh, we, it, it won't be available to us after, uh, today. And so I would at least ask the city clerk to ask the council and the mayor if they would like to meet, try to meet again for another special call meeting at six o'clock tonight, to try to, uh, approve a purchase of this dump truck. If not, uh, at, at least we'll get some kind of clarification or some final decision, whether or not they wanna do it. If they don't meet tonight, then it just won't be available anyway, and then we'll just have to do what we have to do, uh, and use the old dump truck. But I, I would at least try to ask and see if they would like to meet later tonight, when everyone, when there's a chance that everyone can be available. So we can have a call later.
And, and I'm, I'm happy with that, if Ms. Ramsey and everybody else is happy that we can do that, and we can bring up the dump truck first, dispense with that. And if we wanna continue this conversation, as long as it doesn't take too much longer, then that's fine with me too, and that'd be a third opportunity, not to mention all the others, the last ten and a half years, we've had to address it.
That's fine with me, six, six o'clock, uh, I should be available six o'clock.
The request, they may not do it, but I, at least I'd like to ask them if they, if they would like to.
Okay.
But the thing to understand here, for those still on, and then we'll get off, no decision is a decision. And we can't make a decision without a call. And in this case, we can't get a much needed, it sounds like a much needed dump truck. And this, we're gonna lose that opportunity in twenty-four hours, uh, for reasons we can explain later. And if we don't make a decision on this facility going forward, that's, that's a decision. But we already made that decision, so it has to be repealed. The decision that was already made has to be repealed, and that requires a call, not making that decision is a decision. So, all right, I don't know who else is on.
Nobody. No council people are on. It's just all of us.
None of the council members are on.
Well, do y'all wanna do the special call at six?
Mayor, you, you have authority to call.
Mayor, you froze.
Do y'all wanna, do y'all wanna do it?
I, I'll give it a yo mis try.
Man, I know you don't wanna do it, but Derek's right about one thing, it, you know, it's now or never on that, sure.
We'll just have, we'll just do what we have to do, I mean.
Let's go ahead and call it, if we don't get a call, we don't get a call. Try, that'll be you know, that's all we can do.
And, and we can Well, I mean, I'm actually, is who's gonna be, if, if we don't have a call now, what's gonna happen? And I know we can't discuss the details of it, but we have a mediation at one o'clock.
Oh, that's right. Well, I don't know.
Okay, well, okay.
It's a good question, though. All right, well, let's adjourn, so we can maybe get in, bite the lunch, go to the restroom, for those of us who have to come back.
All right, see you in a little bit.
Thank y'all.